Public session to order. We have a quorum. The I will identify the closed session topics, recommended expulsions, public employee assignment, reassignment appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiators, conference with legal counsel, existing lit anticipated litigation. Public comment on closed session topics, public comment on any closed session item will be heard at this time pursuant to board policy. The board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comment by stating your name. There's no public comment. We will now adjourn to closed session. I'd like to welcome everybody. Like to welcome everybody to our public session. I'd like to welcome our our student board representative Savannah Torres from Redwood High School. Thank you for being here. Gus Mora will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees would like who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting. Please pick up the headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Gus Mora servirá como intérprete el español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español. Elir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Thank you. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending this meeting. Any member of the public wanting to provide public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form. The green form located table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart, board manager for the item. Before the item comes up on the agenda, please complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting at the table in the back of the room. She has pretty red on. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. And now our pledge of allegiance, a board member named. I will now report action taken in closed session. We I'm going to report out the appointment of Mr. Jim Billingsley, Director of Teaching and Learning STEM. This appointment was made on February 2nd during closed session at a board work session on a motion by Board Member Otto and a second by Board Member Naylor. It was unanimously a unanimous vote to appoint Mr. Jim Billingsley as our Director of Teaching and Learning in STEM. There are revisions to the meeting this evening enclosure one, 11, and 12. And now we will have a student performance by the Redwood High School Jazz Band, Mr. Thompson.
All right. Good evening, Board Superintendent Trump, Board President. Actually, before we enter testing, okay, it's kind of cutting now. Let's let's reorient. Let's have the students get up, get ready. You guys do that, and then we'll introduce you. Board, if you guys want to reorient and kind of head out to the front so you can see, and then we'll introduce them and get them started. So as we're orienting, this is our Redwood High School Jazz Band under the direction of Mr. Jordan Luay. They've been working hard lately, going to a lot of concerts and festivals and doing a great job. And we're very fortunate tonight to have them here. Also, I want to give a shout out to the parents because we know there's a lot of time that's invested here for the students, but also for the families and those long nights that you guys are working together. So let's give a quick welcome for the Jazz Band of Redwood High School.
Hi, everybody. We're going to play a nice little island tune called St. Thomas. So for Tanger in the Caribbean. Thanks so much for having us. We're going to take a quick moment, pack everything out.
To welcome Mr. Billingsley properly, so I would like to read his bio. Jim Billingsley currently serves as the Assistant Principal of Curriculum and Instruction at Exeter High School. Prior to his employment with Exeter Union, Mr. Billingsley worked for Visalia Unified School District, where he served at this as the STEM curriculum coordinator for two years, a teacher on special assignment for two years, and a science teacher for 15 years at El Diamante High School. He also worked as a science teacher for four years at San Marcos High School. Mr. Billingsley holds a Bachelor of Science in Microbiology from Cal Poly State University, San Luis Obispo, and a Masters of Science in Biology from the University of Nebraska. He also holds a single subject teaching credential and an administrative service credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations and welcome home. Oh, we'll move to 4.1 Spotlight on Good Things Happening in the District, Mr. Schrum.
Thank you, Board President, members of the board, and our public tonight. Again, a huge shout out to Redwood. Just an excellent job. Always a joy to hear them and play and then all of our talented VAPA programs all across the district. Again, as you know, we have artwork in the hall and we get to hear them at every board meeting now. And so I think it's just a great thing and connecting our kids to school, right? One Visalia connected arts, sports, clubs, all those things connect our kids. And so thank you to our teachers and parents, especially because there's a lot of parental work that goes into helping these programs as well. And so we appreciate that. As we talk about our spotlight that, of course, what a great way to begin that. Going to our core beliefs and commitments, of course, about ensuring that all of our students can achieve at high levels that are they're connected to school. And so this spotlight report really highlights how we are doing that in Visalia Unified. So want to begin with several things. A lot of things have been happening in our district since the last board meeting. Our amazing teachers, their support staff, paraprofessionals, classified certificate employees, all making a difference every day for nearly 32,000 students all the way from preschool through adult. And we had several of our teachers who have been spotlighted on KSE's 24, Channel 24 Educators of the Week. And so if you missed any of these, you can go back and see them, but we wanted to make sure we captured them all. First up from left to right, Mr. Rajir Singh from Sequoia High School teaches social studies. The student who nominated quote says, "When you're honest as a teacher, you gain trust from students." Definitely. And he did gain my trust the minute that I met him. Mr. John Coon from Redwood High School teaches in our ag department, the second pitcher there for the last 23 years, 25, 23 at Redwood, 25 overall. Student quote, "He is always there no matter what. When you have a question, he doesn't care. He is always there to help you." And then finally Jill Card from Golden Oak Elementary School, Ms. Card has been a teacher for 22 years, says her job is amazing and fulfilling and loves her students each in their own unique way. And a student quote says, "Well, she's nice and helps people and she makes us rhyme words," which that's important, right? Got to do that in those grades. So congratulations to each of these educators. And I'm sure we're going to see more of these because I know we have amazing teachers in our district, and I'm just so glad to see some of them being recognized in such unique ways. And now everyone in the valley knows that the best teachers are in Visalia Unified. So as we go on, and not only do we have the best staff, we have the best students as well. And we had several that were recognized also with KSE 24 Character Matters recipients and with Tulare County as well. And so Luna Guzman from Crestwood Elementary School, one of our TK students. And she was nominated because she is a model helper or in the class. Great job, Luna. And then Bailey Robb from Ridgeview Middle School was selected by the teachers because the tuba playing is the foundation of the band's music. She's a leader through her music. And as we know, leadership happens in many venues, including the arts. So shout out to these students who join our teachers as being recognized. And we have about 30 plus thousand exceptional students as well. So again, now the valley's secret's out, right? Moving on to some other things, again, continuing to highlight, El Diamante hosted East Yosemite League Boys and Girls Wrestling Championships. Redwood Boys and Girls Wrestling both won the East Yosemite League Championship. Above are pictures of all of our wrestlers, both the boys and the girls. We had lots of individual champions, El Diamante Boys, Joseph Clark, Girls, Margarita Berilia, Golden West. Girls, Bobby Castellinones, Madeline Luna, Jackie Green, Lana Camacho, Bella Castellanzo, Mount Whitney, Boys, Noah Murillo, Victor Bina Court, Girls, Janitha Colan, Redwood, Boys, Isaac Mendoza, Pedro Mendez, Adrian DeLeen, Enrique Segura, Kia Presnyov, Jordan Nguyen, Girls, April Redden, Jenna Cressman, Audrey Segura. It goes on and on. Congratulations to these students. Had a chance, by the way, the first time to see my first wrestling match, I was able to see, believe it was Green Acres and Divisadero Middle School last week, so got to enjoy some of that. And then on February 7th, eight of our winter high school student athletes were recognized by the downtown Visalia Kiwanis and Tulare County Office of Education for displaying the six pillars of character counts and pursuing victory with honor during their season. El Diamante, Sofia Perez, Girls Basketball, Barclay Avila, Boys Wrestling, Golden West, Amaya Lemus, Girls Basketball, Andre Figueroa, Boys Basketball, Mount Whitney, Diana Castillo, Girls Soccer, Julian Romero, Boys Wrestling, and then Redwood, Leah C., Girls Soccer, and Jordan Nelson, Boys Soccer. So great job to these athletes for standing out for their leadership and their character. And apologies to any student's name that I mispronounced tonight. So please provide some grace there. And then moving into our arts. Oh, I forgot to, as I read the names, I forgot to advance the slide. So there are the students. And then moving on to our arts, Green Acres had their musical Oklahoma. I know many of us, I was there with a couple of the board members on Friday night, I believe it was. Outstanding job. And to think they're just in middle school. I was really blown away. And then Ridgeview Middle School Honor Band students, thank you, Ms. Pacili, for putting on this amazing performance. And you see some of our students there. Spotlight in the district has been busy time. Of course, we had our Alice Active Shooter Training. So far, we've been able to train about 4,000 employees, so we have trained almost every single one of our employees. And so we know as a result of this training, questions emerge. We begin to see things differently within our environments. And so all that information is coming in as we think about what are our facility implications, what future trainings needed? Now, how does this look like as we think about rolling this out to students? How do we make sure parents see that? So a lot of things that will continue to happen in this realm of student, staff, of course, safety, ensuring that everybody is safe within our district. So very impactful training. And then I am going to just have to have a couple of brag seconds here because yesterday we had our District Professional Development Day. And Greg Price, our VUTA president, I think he's here, and I had an opportunity to go around and visit several sites together. And what was so powerful about yesterday is it was teacher directed, teachers working together in jobalikes, right? So I'm a math teacher and I teach seventh grade math, but all the seventh grade math teachers together from each school. And so there was a unique opportunity to talk about what's working at our sites, what do we need to improve on, all around the theme of how do we finish strong? And so I heard so much feedback from our teachers that this needs to be something we have more opportunity to engage in. We already met today in executive cabinet to talk about how do we re-envision the beginning of the year? That day where we're all together to provide that opportunity. So not only bringing them together to think about how do we finish strong, but bringing teachers together in August and thinking about how do we start strong and give them a chance again to collaborate, to look at their resources, to learn what's working. I think that's the most powerful, we know collective efficacy as a strategy when teachers come together and feel empowered, has a greater predictor of student success than almost any other research-based strategy. And so I just want to shout out to all of our teachers for the professionalism, the engagement that they showed yesterday. Thank you so much, teachers. Also, you see another image there, Educational Services, Training Teachers on Building Cultures. We have several cohorts of teachers that are engaged in that. And then you see a couple of other images here. You see them working together. And this was playing out at sites all across our district. And so very proud. Thank you to our executive cabinet, Mark Thompson and team, and Andy DeMayo and his group as well for working to make sure yesterday was a success. On social media, we again continue our campaign of recognizing individuals within our district. We celebrating our welders. Of course, you see that in the first picture, though, because of them keeping our equipment together, right? We even have a certificated or certified underwater welder. I'm guessing that's for the pools. So hey, you know, many schools celebrating kindness week. Of course, that's something that's going on, a national campaign. And also Counseling Week. And so you see, we did some celebrations for our counselors and educated the community on the roles and responsibilities. And I also want to take a minute to thank our over 63 counselors in our district. And thanks to this board. We have at least one counselor in every one of our schools. And I think that's very powerful because we know how important the role that they play is. So thank you, counselors. Moving on, we had some people age rapidly. We had the 100th Day of School Celebration. And then just like that, the next day they looked young again. Let's finish strong, the 70-plus days we have left. Highlight to our board who took some time to talk about what our core beliefs and commitments mean to them. And then, of course, we celebrated Board Appreciation Month as well. And this month, of course, is very important because we celebrate Black History Month. And this month, we're focused on the theme of that, celebrating black excellence. And so we see not only within our system, opportunities for our students both to recognize and celebrate the stories of those individuals who have stamped and changed our history, but also the students that are sitting in our classroom that are writing their story that's just beginning and what change they're going to affect in the world for the better. And so this month, we take time to celebrate black history with our campaign as well. And so just want to highlight a few of the things. First of all, again, our VUSD library and staff, just of one at the district level. And then all of our school sites just do a phenomenal job of showcasing literature that students can see themselves reflected in. And so, of course, from Hispanic Heritage Month to Black History Month, they make sure as we have these months that they make literature for those recognitions available. And so we appreciate them, not to mention our teachers and the classroom activities that go on to accompany this month as well. Really proud. We don't have a picture up here, but we tweeted it out. And I just want to highlight, we sent over 100 students from all four of our comprehensive high schools and Sequoia to participate in the African American Student Leadership Conference at Fresno State. That's powerful, right? When we're able to create opportunities for our students to get together, learn from each other, and exercise their voice and their leadership. And it made me so proud to see our students representing us in such a fashion, right? With other high schools from all across the state. So thank you so much for Andy DeMayo and his team, Brandon and his team as well for creating these opportunities to showcase our student leadership. Also had a message yesterday. You see on the left-hand side, we had many community members speak about what this month means to them. And then including not only people within our community, but within our own school system as well. And you'll see a video here, Ladonna Boswell from our Business Information Technology Services. I told her she's a celebrity now. And she began, she's like, she probably already knew she was a celebrity, but so she helped us kick off Black History Month here in Visalia Unified. And so we're going to conclude the spotlight hearing her words as she kicks off this impactful month for us in Visalia.
Hello, Visalia Unified. Happy Black History Month. We want to take a moment to celebrate and honor the contributions and achievements of black individuals throughout history. From the pioneering educators like Mary McLeod Bethune and Carter G. Woodson to civil rights leaders like Rosa Parks and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., black individuals have played a vital role in shaping our education system. We also want to recognize the ongoing work to ensure that our schools are inclusive and equitable for all students. We are committed to providing a safe and inclusive environment for all students and to educate them about the contributions of black individuals to our society. We would like to remind our students and families that this is the time to celebrate, to learn, and to appreciate the diversity of our community. We encourage everyone to take the time to explore the rich contributions of black individuals in our history and to learn more about the ongoing pursuit of racial equality. In recognition of this important month, we are highlighting black excellence in our district by showcasing the accomplishments of our black students, our staff, and our community members. Let's make every month Black History Month by uplifting and celebrating culture all year round.
Agenda item 4.2, Visalia Unified District Quarterly Report, Superintendent Schrum.
Thank you, Board President, Board members, and our public. Of course, we have made a commitment as a district. We've heard from our community, our constituents, our board. How do we become more transparent? How do we help share the things that are going well as well as areas that we're working on? And the only way to do that is to identify important data as a starting point and then go from there. And so we're now bringing you our second quarter report. And so, of course, as a reminder of this report, we'll share a little bit about the metrics that as a cabinet team, our team has developed. Of course, this is not the only stuff that we do in the district, right? But we had to start somewhere with just creating the culture of data and accountability. And so, of course, this connects with our core beliefs and commitments. So what you're going to see in the report is a numbering. So if it relates to core belief, the first one, all students can achieve at high levels, you'll see a one. And then you'll see a point one or two to correspond with the commitment that goes with that. This is important because, as you know, as a district, our job is to create the conditions for our teams, our school sites to be successful. And so we're going to begin with our Business Services Division.
Thank you, Superintendent Schrum. Good evening, Board. So our Business Services Team, our focus is really around ensuring staff have the tools that they need and data to be able to effectively manage their departments and sites. We focus a lot of our attention on providing training on our on our processes. And so we're looking at in our quarter two, how many staff were trained around business services activities. And we focused a lot on some internal practices for second quarter, lots of position control and budget type items. And then as it relates to funding, how we're tracking with attendance. So attendance did take a slight dip in second quarter compared to first quarter, but still up over last year. So we'll continue to monitor that. Our purchasing and print shop teams continue turning out work. And our tech services team answering tickets and ensuring that. And our tech services team answering tickets and ensuring that again, tools are available for staff and students. And we did report a ninety-nine plus percent uptime. Of course, we were a hundred percent down last Tuesday, but sometimes we can't, we can't, we can't control some of those things that are outside of our land. So just a couple of photos here of some work that we're doing on a network redundancy and emergency preparedness project. That's kind of a highlight there as we continue to make those efforts to keep our system secure. And then looking at implementing some additional security measures around some of our important financial and IT systems. And I believe I'm turning this to Ed Services. Mr. Gridiron.
Thank you, Nathan. Good evening, Board. So I have the privilege of stepping in tonight for Mr. DeMayo, and we will be just covering some of our metrics for Educational Services. The focus of Educational Services is just to ensure that our students have access to the resources they need for them to be successful. And so as we look at really the four departments within our division, we will start with our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. And that is led by Michelle Reed and Jeff Han, who's actually, they've done a remarkable job in providing access to opportunities for our students. And so their work over the year has been focused on building out programs and offering for students. And we have steady seeing growth in involvement in comparison from last year to this year. So our first intercession was very successful with over a thousand students participating. As we look into our Family Community Resource Center, although we've seen chronic absenteeism continues to be an area of focus, we have made marked improvement over the last year. And we've looked at drastic ways to increase the amount of students or families receiving connections and participating and having made response to the needs of our students and families. So you can see we went from six hundred and fifty-three to over thirty-six hundred this year. In the Equity and Student Services Division, we've increased the number of school counselors. And Mr. Schrum mentioned that earlier. Last year, we went from fifty-four to sixty-three, thanks to the board's commitment in that endeavor. And we've been working with our new training campaign with counselors and their interactions with students as a part of our One Visalia Connected, obviously making sure that all of our students are connected to meaningful activities, specifically connection with our counselors. And so this has resulted in dramatic increase in the number of students that have been connected with our counselors. And our first quarterly report is around four thousand connections. Now we're over nineteen thousand. And so we've also started our campaign around our juniors having the opportunities to go to college tours. And so thus far, we've had one school site, which is Eldi Amonte, participate in the college tours. We're preparing for Golden West this coming, in the next coming weeks. And our goal is obviously that every student, every junior in our district will have opportunities to attend the college tours this year. As we move into our Special Education Division, the number of students who qualify for additional support through special education continues to grow. And though our percentages remain lower than similar districts of our size, we're working to look at auditing process, which will help us to consider best practices for special education support. We're also seeing a steady increase in the number of students who are joining our district and are already identifying with needs for special education support. And so as we look forward with our next steps, when we look at our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, our data is telling us that our community appreciate and desires increased opportunities in this area. And so as a result, we're continuing to build out this campaign and provide unique opportunities for our students after school for their second semester, along with the new campaign for summer school that will focus on student engagement and standards recovery acceleration. Our Family Community Resource Center are pleased to improvement in overall students attendance. And so they're continuing to address and looking at ways to provide services to ensure that we're increasing or decreasing the number of chronic absenteeism across our district and providing additional support and staff on site. And then the last area in relation to our Equity and Student Services Department, which Mr. Schrum mentioned earlier, is our campaign around Alice. We continue to monitor our metrics in relation to the support we're providing to our students. And so we're looking obviously to make sure that our students are continuing to be connected. But as we continue to work around safety and our district belief suggests that our schools are areas that need to be safe and secure for students and staff. In response, we've completed Alice Campaign for Emergency Preparedness. And we're going to continue to provide training and support for our new staff that come in. But our next steps will include look what training looks like for our students and our additional staff as we move forward. And then finally, our facilities planning will consider the safety needs and locations and areas that we need for improvement. And lastly, in areas of special education, we're pleased that through our Special Education Department, many of our students are receiving additional supports that they need. And our numbers indicate that there are opportunities for refining and enhancing. So our special education team is continuing to do that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. So there's a lot of us. I'm trying not to like make the line go back out that way, right? Ben Dillon is Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Just a brief kind of note here, I know you can see there's a lot of information up here on the board on lots of numbers. One of the things I want to just kind of pay, point attention to is that you'll see some things that are similar to the data that we reported to you back in October from the first quarter. There are a few things that may look a little bit different because depending on the time of year, there are certain timelines in which we may collect data, right? On certain things in the first quarter, but we may not do that again until the end of the year or vice versa. So just as a point of reference, you'll see on the evaluation slide on the next, one of the next slides here that I clicked to that we, while we gather information about completed evaluations from management staff, different points throughout the year and for classified staff, our certificated staff primarily, our teachers, our counselors, speech pathologists, we only gather that information in our current practices at the end of the year. So you'll get that information, for example, when we come back in June. One of the things I do want to also point out, just to highlight on this data here, is that you'll see next to classified vacancies, both in quarter one and quarter two, there's an asterisk. The asterisk specifically points out that those numbers reflect the total number of vacancies. I do want to point out though, that from those numbers, ninety of those vacancies are specific to special education paraprofessional positions. And as we've shared with you through our partnership with CSCA, our labor partners there, we've been able to coordinate and work out agreements that have allowed us to contract out temporarily as we continue to recruit for permanent positions in those roles so that our students who are supported by those folks don't go without support as we continue recruiting some of these really challenging to fill positions. So I kind of referenced there, there's information about our educator support data, the number of teachers are supporting evaluations completed. And then also some of the data from our benefits and risk management team, Kevin Mays and his team. So you can see just another little update about injuries, time out of work, continuing to really strengthen and bolster our return to work program that allows us to provide accommodations or for alternate activities for those staff so that we, they're not missing out on needed work opportunities and our students are still getting the very best from our folks. So the last thing here is just in light of that data, some of the things that we are doing right now, we are, we have expanded our recruitment for both certificated and classified staff, really excited to share with you about just some of the really creative and neat things that both Dr. Serena Arias, Robyn Arhar Kria, working in partnership with Andre and his team and others to help recruit in ways we've never recruited before. And so we've had expanded events and recruitment activities. You can see some of the examples listed up on the screen there. Also, one of the things that we're doing is providing early offers for hard-to-fill positions. And so working to get that information out, some of those postings have already gone out for some of our VAPA positions that we talked about, but we'll also be posting positions coming up here in this week and next week for our positions going into next year that we really need to get ahead of. And then finally, really looking at some intentional targeted retention strategies. And we'll be bringing more information about some of those specifically when we come back on the twenty-eighth. So thank you.
All right. Good evening for learning and leadership tonight. We have a few of our updates or metrics that we used from last time. So I know it's on huge print, but I'll go through it on that. But first of all, just giving where we are GPA-wise, this is now the end of the semester. So it sometimes looks a little different. It dipped a little bit in high school. But looking at like ninety-two percent in middle school, seven-five percent, two-point-oh or higher there. So again, the two-point-oh and two-point-three are important because those numbers are the ones that allow students to participate in extracurricular activities. So that's why we use that. Last time, there was a request to like talk about students that have three-point-five or higher as well. And so that data is there too. We have forty percent in middle school that are currently at a three-point-five or higher GPA. And in high school, thirty-seven percent there. The next one that we're looking at is iReady data. We've seen in the past that the iReady data actually coordinates well with S-BAC data. This is an end of the year. So if a student's a third grader and they're passing the iReady data, it's showing that they are prepared for the finish of third grade for that year. So if you see that in ELA, we're at thirty-two percent, which was higher than last year. It's a plus thirteen from the last time that I came to you guys. So there is a steady increase going on there. And then in math, we are at twenty percent, which is a bump of ten percent. So they're doubling over themselves each, or at least that's what they did this last time, which is exciting to see. Obviously, still work to do there. We have my path that we're still focusing on. Teachers are utilizing that more and more each day. Administrators are very target, are getting training and targeting and diagnostics so that they're able to have more in-depth conversations with teachers on what is going on, where are the students missing the gaps and where are things going on so we can be more targeted in our teaching. Next one is school leadership, and this is areas going out to sites. So over that time, we had, if you, how I calculate that is they go to each site for a minimum of every other week. And that puts at two-hundred-and-fifty-two, and they actually hit their exact mark, two-hundred-and-fifty-two. All areas hit their sites at least twice a month. Many of them even did more than that, but that's the minimum. And they're usually there for at least an hour and a half to spend time walk through classrooms with the, with the principals, working with them and working with teachers and just being a part of that atmosphere. So continuing on with our matrix for early learning, this is exciting as well. Preschool, we had seven-thirty, seven-hundred-and-thirty students last time that I was here. We were able to expand. Mrs. Trevino and the team have been working hard on just providing access for families. And we're at a plus two-hundred-and-ninety students right now. So seven-hundred-and-thirty students that are in our preschool program. And then our TK, our Transitional Kindergarten, we're at five-hundred-and-sixty-seven right now, which is a plus sixty-three since the last time I came here. And then paper is a, looking instructional technology, we're just bringing up paper. Paper is that tutoring program that we have that's available to students twenty-four-seven, provides them a text-based opportunity to get help with work. It's done in a fashion that they don't give the answer. As we know, you could probably get that in Google, but this is actually trying to help students problem solve and work through it and have someone live there working with them through text base. So engagements for this two months, which was from October first to twelve-thirty-one, was almost six thousand, fifty-nine-hundred, which is a plus thirty-six-hundred from last time, which we were just ramping up. So again, doubling over itself, a little bit more than doubling over itself. SA's done during that timeframe is about almost fourteen-hundred, and that was a plus of almost a thousand from the last time we brought. So again, we have some work there to continue to get the message out that we could use it more robustly, but that is, it is ramping up. Last but not least, athletics. Again, we moved into a different season. And so we have a small increase in middle school participation and in high school, a one percent increase. Again, that's sports specific. So but just showing how many students are involved. Last time, I did also share the VAPA and the CTE school participation rates, their classes, so they don't change. So that's why I didn't bring that this time because it was just redundant information. But just a reminder on that VAPA, we have forty-five percent of our middle schools involved in a VAPA class. Forty-two percent of high school students in a VAPA class. CTE, we have twenty percent of middle schoolers involved and forty-seven percent of high schoolers involved in a CTE class. So those are very robust programs that we have going on here. And then last but not least is our action steps. So again, Mr. Schrum shared this, and it was a huge success. And it wasn't me, it was the team around that really worked hard to make February thirteenth a valuable day yesterday. Teachers did an amazing job of engaging and, you know, there's a large appetite for us to continue to work together as we do need to finish strong. And we need to focus on that. And how do we start strong each time so we can stay focused? But just was very pleased with the team, just looking at teachers being collaborative, working together and creating targets for the end of the year. So a couple of other action steps is continue to develop increased capacity of iReady with our site leaders and staff. Again, the diagnostic is important because you can't just give it to them and then not look at it. It's important to look at it and talk with students so that they understand the purpose, the why, and also the skills that they might need extra support in. And obviously, just continue to maintain the area administrators' ability to be on sites, to be working, coaching our principals and working with them day in and day out is so important and the commitment we have made this year. Continue with support for TK and preschool programs. As you guys can see, they are growing. There is a huge need there, but obviously we have to be very mindful of that of just how many opportunities, you know, that we can make sure we have the space, the teachers and that. So we continue to look at that. And the last but not least is the increased student and parent awareness of paper. We have been working on a few things of sending out videos on how-tos, getting it out to teachers and those things, but we still need to continue to do that. One thing we haven't tapped into or working on is student social media because that's really how they speak and talk to each other more than what we have pushed out. So just kind of working on some avenues there to help get that word out, that paper is there to support them. Now I'm going to hand over to Eric Care, Operations.
Thanks, Mark. I'll share a few data points from Operations for the last quarter. So in facilities, not a huge change, although we're happy to report we've completed two sites. So we've had, we had now there are six, six sites have been completed. So that would be Green Acres and Crowley. Those modernizations are wrapping up. We now have nine in progress. So we've added some middle schools to that. And then we, we still have ten in design. So nice to, to start to finish some, some projects, especially with the supply chain problems that we've had. Overall, in nutritional services, so these numbers, it's important to remember, these are compared to the same month last year. So this is the number of kids eating breakfast and lunch. So we're really happy with any increase over the previous year, especially since we're really looking at the no-cost breakfast and lunch for our students. We want to make sure we're supporting that and continuing to push that out. So those numbers, it's not an increase over the last quarter, the last month, it's the comparison to the last year. In transportation, so transportation is one area that my team and I've been focusing on. We have a new director that's now in his second week. He's already got a lot of great ideas. He's working with HR in terms of new recruiting ideas for bus drivers. We did have a drop in our on-time, PM on-time especially. AM on-time was a little bit also dropped, and that's mainly due because of the fog. So, and we are still short on drivers. But we, like I said, we have plans in place to kind of correct that. In terms of maintenance, I did get a couple of questions on the number of work orders. So that eight-hundred-and-twenty-four, that represents the number of work orders that are open for the maintenance department. It's important to remember that, that the way our system is set up and we are doing some work on that, so when I get to the next slide, I'll talk about that a little bit. But anybody, anybody at the site can put in a work order. So there are lots of duplicates. There are work orders that that may not be for things that actually need to be repaired. There's work orders sometimes for just a question. And so we don't have a great system right now to really filter those and utilize the system that we have for our work orders to its, to its, to its most efficient way. And so we're working on that. And again, the electoral department continues to be the one that has the most number, the highest number. So in terms of some action steps, so the lead time for facilities projects, we know we've brought several proposals to you to purchase the equipment ahead of the project. And so we're continuing to do that. That's actually going to be our, our mode of operation going forward. There's a couple of things that we're bringing to you tonight for approval that is ahead of the actual work starting. And, and we're going to need to continue to do that. We've got some, just next door in the Oaks Building, there's some, some parts that are on back order. And so we're not sure of when those are going to come in. They're usually electrical or HVAC parts where there's those delays. I talked about transportation a little bit. The director is starting and working on all of the processes. The thing that I'd like to report and the thing that I noticed actually the first day that he was there when he had that first meeting is he really is working on the connection with the team there. I feel that there's, there's, there are more connections. They're happier to be here. The drivers are happier. And so lots of good things happening in transportation. So we're really excited there. HR, we're working with HR on alternative recruitment options. Ben mentioned a little bit of that. We've got some, some, some job fairs coming on where we're actually going to do the on-the-spot hiring, which is a change for us. We're looking at different social media and different media outlets where we can get the word out that we have openings. We're also working on potentially looking at different types of structure in terms of our team with our bus drivers. Are there some things we can do with hours or with, with the times that they drive and routing? Also TransFinder coming on board as we, as we continue to build that out and then shoot for an, for an August launch next year. We will be looking at that to kind of really Um, as we, as we continue to build that out and then shoot for an, for an August launch next year, we will be looking at that to kind of really uh, uh, maximize the routes and make sure they're efficient. It will also tell us whether or not we need more drivers or we have enough drivers. So a, a lot of those things together will really help our processes. And then in maintenance, um, you approved additional staffing. So now uh, instead of a director and one supervisor, we have a director and three coordinators. Each of those coordinators uh, cover a, a group of trades. And so the coordinator is, is specializes in uh, those trades that they supervise. And so for example, Sean McDonald, very good with electrical and low voltage. He supervises that team. And then we have Tony Brazil and Josh Creach that both were contractors. And so they bring a lot of uh, knowledge and, and, and are really able to supervise those teams and deploy that work uh, in a more efficient manner. So um, that was something that we've also done. So I think that's it. Yep. Thank you, Andre.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, uh, Board President Gomoyen, members of the Board, Superintendent Schrum. So Superintendent's office, we're gonna show you the metrics, but I want to just first preface it with the uh, that is gonna show you that the, this office is not uh, busy, but we're actively engaged. And there's a big difference, right? So busy is just you kind of go through the motions, actively engages that you're out there listening, digging deep and really trying to see what's happening in the district. And so um, the superintendent from the mid, mid-October to the end of October till the end of the semester, uh, visited eighteen schools, seventy-eight for the year. This doesn't include um, the Friday to go see Oklahoma or running on a Saturday to the color run for pro youth. All these other things, seeing wrestling and all these other components that he goes and visits. Um, and the other thing I want to say about this, this metric is that the uh, the visits have changed. So remember at the beginning, the first quarter was about really covering the district. Now it's going back to visit the classrooms and, and uh, the sites in a more deeper level. So uh, that's where you're gonna see the, the metric kind, kind of change a little bit. And I know that, you know, there's visitations that are happening with, with all of you as well. Um, and communications, uh, you know, we, we've continued to maintain the number of posts. Our goal is uh, one a day during the business week. And so you'll see on holidays and when we're off, weekends, we're not posting, uh, but during the time that we're in session, we are. Uh, I just want to give a shout out to our team because did an amazing job. Awesome news in a month from now uh, for you. I know we will uh, come back to you with some news and, and we're very excited about that. Um, we've increased our, continuing to increase our followers. We've uh, had uh, four hundred and sixty, sixty-nine, I believe, uh, for this quarter. About a thousand total new for this year. What we're finding is that we plateaued, right? So it's just like, you know, instruction, we look at data and instruction. So now we're asking ourselves, what can we do different? And so you're gonna see some changes in the way we post, how often we post, and what social media platforms we do so. Um, and I'll give an example, uh, the High Five Friday when we did in, in uh, at Sequoia back in December, had about twenty-nine thousand views. Okay, so we look at not so much likes or people who like do something like that. It's how many engagements that have about twenty-nine thousand. The last one we did over in Goshen, about eighteen thousand. So we know that students that are, that's what we're here for. And so really getting out that student voice and those other things is, is the next step. Um, and then, you know, on Blackboard, we're, we're continuing to work on that. We're gonna bring forth, they'll see in the next steps, uh, some pieces there. About seventy-nine percent of the, the Blackboard messages that go out are, are received, but that means that's twenty-one percent too low, right? Because we need to be able to, to connect with every single parent, every single family. So we need to find ways to be able to do that as well. And then uh, we use NBC, which is something that, you know, that we share uh, with our principals. So we can kind of see what they're doing. And so we, we've had an increase in alerts. I always want to thank the area administrators because they've been really helping with that and move that forward. Um, and then the last piece is our outreach. So outreach encompasses a lot of, what, wide swath of items. So it's uh, round tables, the service clubs. Um, those meetings happen uh, early in the morning to, well into the evening, right? Um, but the one thing that, that is for certain is that your message is getting out there. Uh, the superintendent goes out and he shares what actions are happening at this point in time. Right now, the message you'll hear uh, in the next presentation is around what does it mean to have Visalia Forward, uh, Visalia Unified Four Twenty Thirty? And so we're beginning to educate the community around that. And the first pulse is, you know, there's a lot of excitement, right? Um, and then as well as the engagements, we also have the, the advisory engagements as well. So we focused back in December on the students before they left, because we wanted to see what was your experience like the first semester? How was learning for you? Um, what could we do better in order to ensure that your needs are met, right? So looking from the end user's perspective. And so we had those three, and we're gonna continue with teachers, with classified staff, et cetera, uh, parents, you know, to continue to get their, their, their voice heard. And so uh, some of the uh, action steps that we have is we'll continue to invite, refine the site visit process. Um, so our team, uh, Delia, Monica, Felisa, who did an amazing job day in and day out, uh, will continue to look at how we refine that and other processes throughout the office, uh, redesigning social media. Like I mentioned, uh, we want to get the, the widest amount of engagements possible. So we want to get our story out there. We heard the community. You know, they wanted to hear that. So we, we've definitely been doing that. Uh, developed a process for Blackboard messaging. One thing we heard from parents was, hey, I don't want to be bombarded every day with messages from all the schools, right? So we're, we're working on a process uh, based on their feedback from the advisory to uh, to kind of change that up. And then uh, just continue to support the sites and the departments on their messaging. Like you heard uh, Mr. Karen in hard-to-feel positions, it's how do we uh, work differently to be able to get the word out about, hey, we need more bus drivers, we need more par professionals, those type of things. And last is the community engagements will shift with the focus on feedback for Visalia Unified Four Twenty Thirty. So you're gonna see a whole sort of things I wanna, because I know Superintendent's gonna come up and, and talk about that. But just uh, you know, that, that's gonna be uh, the next semester. And with that, that's it. And so our overall next steps you see here is just continue to refine the quarterly metrics and really just continue to do the work that the superintendent will cover in the next couple of presentations. Okay, thank you.
Is there any questions or comments from the board? Um, I'd just like to say, I, I read a lot that comes out of um, CSBA. And just in the last couple of days, they talked about, we need thousands of tutors. And I think Visalia is ahead of the game with paper. So I was really, I felt really good about that. So just want to thank you for the work you did to get that to our district. All right, uh, four point three, Visalia Unified Forward Twenty Thirty, a community-driven blueprint, blueprint for the future, Superintendent Schrum.
Well, thank you all uh, for that quarterly report. And I do, you know, uh, Mr. Pacina indicated something. And so not, not to shed too much, but it has come to our attention that some of their work, and rightly so, is gonna be recognized at CALSPRA, which is the State uh, Public Relations Association for uh, education. And so really excited about uh, that. Uh, Board President Gomoyen and I will be attending uh, that awards dinner. And uh, so uh, they, they are most, I mean, thi- this team has, has worked hard, as have all of our teams, to really help change what people think and hear about Visalia and uh, appreciate their work. So just wanted to give them a little shout out. So as we talk about Visalia Forward Twenty Thirty, Community Driven Blueprint for the Future, this is about how do we take these core beliefs and commitments and make them the reality for every student, for everyone within our school system? And again, why is this so important? Because as a board, through policy, we create the conditions that help the district be successful. District creates conditions for schools, schools, so on and so forth, right? And so you've seen me kind of talk about this before, right? There are two kind of different approaches you can take. There's the whack-a-mole, plug-a-dam approach, right? Like as a problem comes up, we just wait and we try to pop it down. But then suddenly so many more pop up, we can't keep up. Same thing with the, with the dam, right? Or we can think strategically, right? How do we take all of these things, well-intentioned or not, and put them in a common direction, right? Again, collective impact. How do we align these things so that we move forward as a district cohesively and not just by random acts? When somebody says something or somebody wants something, right? It takes some self-discipline to move from one approach to the next. But I know this board, this community is debt, is, is committed to doing this and is ready for this. So we're officially kind of launching with this report, the kickoff of our planning process that will go through the spring, through the summer and into the fall. What you're gonna see here is there are basically two major plans that are gonna be happening. Starting this month, a strategic plan and a facilities master plan. They run beside each other because while we have community members in one space at one time, let's talk about the things we need to talk about versus bringing people back thirty thousand times in all different groups, right? And there's implications for each, right? Because, you know, it may come out of our strategic plan that parents are interested in, you know, a specialized school or a different program maybe that we don't have right now, that may have a facility implication. And so it makes sense as this information rolls in that these processes kind of run alongside each other and help inform each other, right, throughout the process. And then with a hopeful completion date of this fall or this winter, right? And you see in the middle there, community outreach and feedback, because throughout this process, there are going to be lots of opportunities for feedback. And then toward the end, as we begin to get some ideas and some thoughts and some potential next steps, that then is gonna go back out to the community. How do you feel about this, right? So not only will our community, which is everybody in this room and in our community, get to weigh in on the initial stage, they'll weigh in again, once some of the ideas have been generated to help sort through what action we ultimately recommend for this board to take. And so there are going to be teams, right? You see down at the very bottom, community outreach. It all begins with our community. Their information's gonna filter up into a work team. They're the team that's gonna take all this information and work to prioritize it, not make decisions, but help I generate themes, help make sense out of all the data that we're gonna get from our community. All the way feeding up, right, to ultimately the board. And you see that feedback loop goes up and down. The board doesn't, right? Because ultimately you're at the top, the decisions will come up to the board for approval. But all of that's reciprocal, right? We'll get community feedback, we'll take it, we'll internalize it, we'll go back out to the community and say, hey, we think this is what you said, or what we heard you say, is this right, right? Community will stamp it, will validate it, then it will come to the board, ultimately in the form of proposals. It will look something like things on the right, right? You see the work team on the left. It's gonna be teachers, community members, labor partners, classified employees, all of that sort. That's the group that's gonna help filter the information. Then when it comes back, what do we do with it? So when it comes to the facilities master plan and things like the strategic plan, we'll then prioritize it, right? That group's gonna help us filter, prioritize it ultimately to recommend to the board, because there are going to be things we have to do. Right? That we've got to do in these next one to three years, maybe safety-related, maybe whatever, right? Then there are gonna be things that people might want to do. It sounds nice. Maybe we'd like to do it. It may be important to some people. But it may not be a must-do, right? That's part of that filtering and prioritization. The benefit of doing that is I may not see what I want to happen right away, but at least people will be able to see, is it gonna happen or not, right? And then for Nathan and other fa- folks, right? Like when we start to strategize that out over a five to ten-year period, then he can start with our budget team to think about, okay, how do we fund these things? Which also could impact how it gets filtered and prioritized. So community feedback, again, want to emphasize this, there are going to be feedback sessions in communities, churches. Uh, we'll go back out to all of our uh, community civic partner groups. Um, you know, w- we're gonna really make sure we canvas the communities. We're gonna go to student groups. We're gonna go uh, all of those sorts of things, right? So that people have opportunity to provide input. I think our community will probably be tired of us by the time we get to the fall, but that'll be a good thing. So what does all this look like? All this input kind of comes into this funnel, right? So all the things we have to decide around data, demographic studies, facilities, site utilization. You know, what does that look like at our school? Because at the end of the day, we want to make sure it doesn't matter where you go to school, that you have opportunity to access, to have the programs that will make you successful as a student and as a teacher. We want people to have confidence in every single one of our schools, no matter where they live, that they're going to get an outstanding education. All that information is gonna go in back and forth. And I know that's really small and you can't read it. I can't even read it from here, right? But what I can tell you is that's all that information. And so when it, people want to know things like, okay, when are we gonna change the boundary of a specific school? It's through that process that those concepts and those thought processes and potential recommendations will be made. But not until we've looked at all these pieces together, because you can't look at those things in isolation. If you look at those things in isolation, we won't make best decisions. So this fall, as a result of all of this process, we will come back to this board. Our community will have heard, we'd have heard from our community. We'll have gone back to our community and said, now what do you think about this? We'll get that information. Then we'll come to the board and say, here are the recommendations based on our community feedback, based on our architect studies, based on uh, ed code, based on everything else, right? For the board to ultimately have public comment and public, all of that sort of stuff on, right? To make the final decisions around what do our facilities look like for the next few years? What do our boundaries and our school configurations possibly look like for the next few years? Are there programs that we need to have at our school sites or at a new school site that we don't have right now? All of that's gonna come out through the sessions that we'll be doing this spring and this summer. So I know there's an urgency in our community to do a lot of this stuff, and I think that's great. But I would just hope our public is hearing and saying, if we're going to do this, let's take the time to do it right. So that the recommendations we ultimately make to the board this fall are sound, are reasoned, um, have been thoroughly vetted, and we have tons of communication and comment opportunity before anything ever gets to a vote. So just wanted to take some time to introduce this to our community. You're going to start to hear more about this. We already have a landing space on our webpage where we'll start to put information. You can expect uh, community-type events to start happening later this spring, March-ish, April sometime. The teams, the district work teams that are made up of parents and others will begin in February, and that will really kind of kick off the process. So thanks for letting me take just a couple of minutes to kind of, at a high level, talk about what the rollout and what the process for these plans is gonna look like over the course of this next year.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Okay, thank you. Um, four point four spotlight on board work session, Superintendent Schrum.
All right. Thank you for our, our final report, because I know some folks are looking at their watch. This was supposed to be a short board meeting, right? What's happening? Oh, all right. We got, looks like, looks like it kicked Chuck out of the uh, out of Google. So what we're gonna do in this report, I want to, last week, our board held a work session. And it wouldn't take just a minute to spotlight the work of our board and how it connects to our larger purposes of district. So in the first work session earlier this year, back in August, our board came together, because remember, our board sets the conditions for our district to be successful. And our board said, there are certain things we believe for every kid, for every teacher, for every person, right? And that we're committed to doing if that's what we believe. That became our beliefs and commitments. The board unanimously approved that. And now, as we go through our future process, now we have to work to figure out, how do we make that happen? How does the district and the board create the conditions to make these things happen? So this past week, our board grappled with this question. Is it possible to have all kids learn at high levels? This was also a question that we posed to our teachers yesterday in their professional development. And if the answer is yes, we believe this is possible, then how do we go about making it possible and making it so? So we're on a journey. Our board, we made initial adjustments. We created beliefs and commitments. You see in the second arrow. Now we're talking about our board clarifies how we move forward. As the district, we figure out all the pieces, how to make it happen. But as the board, you ultimately decide our vision. And creating a theory of action of how we move forward. What is the vision of this board to move the district forward? That's what you worked on last week. This is why it's important. Every successful organization has an explicit or implicit theory of action that articulates what will lead to results. It's those set of beliefs that encompass the conditions that create organizational excellence. So you spent a lot of time, we were here all day, in teams, working and figuring out what is this board's vision of how we move forward. Your vision will be turned into policy that we'll be bringing back to you for a first and second read in the coming weeks. That policy will then drive how we move as a district. And this is what came out of that day that will be in our policy. As a board, you said, these are things that you expect of how we move forward. This is your vision for how we move forward. You want clear expectations? You want to make sure there's a sense of belonging for all of our students and our teachers. You expect a cycle of continuous improvement. So you can expect that to be in policy. And continuous improvement means, how do we continually get better together? You want things to be based on research, right? There is research on how kids learn to read. Is that reflected in our classroom instruction right now? If it's not, it needs to be, right? Because that's what as a board you expect. And that's just one example. I'm not saying it's not, so. But just bear with me, right? And I'd cause panic out there, right? Data informed practices, right? You want to make sure as a board, when we're making instructional decisions, we're basing it on the data. Is it effective? Are we getting a return for our investment on the programs that we use? You expect student centered student outcomes. At the end of day, of the day, this is about our students learning or not. You expect a culture of high performance. We should not be the second highest performing district in Tulare County. And in one of the lowest performing counties in the state. You expect culture of high performance. And as I've met more and more students and more and more teachers, I am convinced. That we can do that, but it's going to change some of our practices for that to happen. But board, you said at our board workshop that that's the work you were committed to doing through your vision. And are expecting us to carry out. And most importantly, other than I think probably continuous improvement, is the building capacity. We have to do this with the people that we have. And build their ability to be effective leaders and effective teachers and effective students throughout the process. This was powerful work. And I want our community to know this board is committed to making sure our beliefs and commitments become a reality. And setting the vision of how we do that through this action. That we will be bringing back to you in a policy is how we will begin to make that happen. So thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit and highlight the work of this board at your work session last week.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No, just also thank you for the opportunity. I think we would all say it was very valuable, so.
Okay, let's move. General public comment, uh, general public comment on any school related. Topic may be heard at this time. The board asked that any public comment on an item listed on. Tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act California's Open Public Meeting Law, Board Discussion is limited. On items on the agenda. Therefore, we're receiving public comment for items not on the agenda. The board's role is to limit to receiving such comments and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation, public comment and understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes. Interval topic topics to 20 minutes. This recommended you be given your comment by stating your name. And I don't see that there is any public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay. Um, let's move on to the consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item?
Yes, President Gamoyen, I would like to pull enclosure number five.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to accept the rest of the consent?
I'll motion.
Motion. Motion by K, uh, board member Casebeers Saleno, uh, second by um, board member Belt, all in favor.
Motion passes with student board representative voting yes and uh, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item uh, six one enclosure five, Mr. Uh, Board Member Vegas.
Yes, um. Out of an abundance of caution, I have a sibling who uh, is employed by someone who does business with the district. So whenever I see their name come up in any agenda item, I abstain just to avoid any perception of a conflict of interest. So I will be abstaining from this item.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept? Enclosure number five.
I'll motion second.
Motion by board member Casebeers Saleno, second by board member Naylor, all in favor.
Student board representative votes yes and motion passes six um, with one abstention, six zero with one abstention.
Well, we are very excited to have Ms. Savannah Torres, our student. Board representative from Redwood High School and you have a report for us.
Yes, thank you, board members. Um, happening at El De Monte High School, it is kindness week at OD. They have dress up days, daily challenges and lunchtime activities. OD is currently celebrating Black History Month with lunchtime activities. Next week is National FFA Week. FFA has planned daily activities and finished the week with the awesome with. With the always popular Kiss the Cow fundraiser. Link Crew will be hosting a three on three basketball tournament ending in a student versus staff game at the end of February. Golden West has had an eventful few weeks with the showcase of their Vapa programs and the recognition of their athletes at their winter sports rally. This week at Golden West, it is full of fun, fun activities and dress up days. The celebration of kindness week, these consist of wonderful tie dye day at lunch and other fun activities. Friday, where Golden West is happy and excited to announce that their annual eighth grade visit will take place with performances. From their Vapa programs and wonderful tour of their campus. Golden West will be having its Kiss the Cow fundraiser campaign, which will be going on for the next two weeks with the cow kissing happening next Friday. All the proceeds will, will be going to the Reese's Across America program. Happening at Mount Whitney, Mount Whitney's Drumline and Color Guard will compete January 28th in the SVWAA competition. Mount Whitney has 17 clubs, hoping to recruit new students at theirs, at Thursday's Club Day at Lunch. Mount Whitney's Cheer Squad, Cheer Squad placed second at their Central Section Championships. And will head to Northern Section Championships in Sacramento this weekend. As winter season sports are ending, Mount Whitney varsity soccer teams and basketball teams will be celebrating their senior. Senior nights at next week's home game. Happening at VCIS on February 6th, many juniors took the cast pre-test. As a way to practice for their upcoming cap test. VCIS ASB decorated the campus for February kindness month and are doing candy grams on Tuesday and Wednesday. At VTAC, VTAC FFA had 12 state degree recipients, a new chapter record. Uh, around 2% of all California FFA members receive their state degree every year. 12 students make up. 5% of VTAC's membership this year. VTAC Scholarship Foundation is. Hosting their denim and diamonds fundraiser on March 4th at the Tulare Ag Center. VTAC wants to say thank you to all the middle schools and K through eight schools. That have hosted VTAC for presentations and recruitment. VTAC wants to congratulate 95 students that were recognized by VTAC's tier one team for outstanding behavior. These students enjoy donuts and opportunity to win prizes. Happening at Sequoia. Jovan Nobles have, has started off to finish strong by June. Last week of January, Sequoia students completed the eye ready testing for Math and E L A. ASB and Leadership created a noon time activity for students on Valentine's Day. Sequoia ASB and Leadership visited La Jolla's Middle School after school fun day. To develop plans to support our middle school and various activities and how to mentor middle school students for the future. Um, happening at Redwood High School. It is currently love week at Redwood. ASB has worked hard to make the campus look filled with posters, lunchtime activities and hearts with student. With all students, teachers name and staff. Staff members to allow everyone at Redwood to feel involved. This Thursday, where Redwood will be having happy to welcome our eighth graders in the bowl with the rally. Redwood Wrestling and Varsity Girl Soccer won EYL this last week. RHS cheer play, play second in the CIF Central Section Competition over the weekend.
Thank you very much. Uh, Board Member Vegas.
Thank you. Uh, let me pull up my notes here. It's been a busy time, but a really fun time visiting sites. Uh, I was able to visit Creekside uh, Community School with Board Member Belt and Board Member Naylor. Uh, where we got to visit some classrooms, learn a little bit more about um, some of the programs, um, the facilities. Um, and all the great work that's going on there. So major shout out to Creekside, uh, and all of our staff or leadership and our students there who are. Uh, really working towards improving and returning to their sites, um, well prepared. Um, along with several of our board members, I had the opportunity to go see the Green Acres Little Theater Production, uh, Oklahoma. Which is really delightful. Uh, we were all talking about how we were surprised that they were middle schoolers. Because they performed, you know, better than some actors on Broadway at this point. They are amazing. Uh, so. Major shout out to not only all of our um, students and, and parents, but really everybody behind the scenes from our theater techs. To lighting, to facilities, uh, to our parents who devote so much time to make sure their kids get to rehearsals. Uh, I just love the way that they really incorporated the entire um, environment into the show. You know, we had students in the walkways, um, performing all over the stage and really just a really phenomenal performance. So looking forward to seeing uh, some of our other middle school and high school productions uh, as well. Uh, along with several of our trustees, I believe trustee Belt, Gamoyen and Gabby. Uh, we had the opportunity to go visit El Diamante at a community and campus culture event held and organized by some of our students. I think there was upwards of 30 plus organizations all tabling at this event. Um, poetry, culture and indigenous groups. Um, we had so many groups. Um, so many clubs and activities for students to enjoy and to learn more about. Uh, it was just a really great time. Uh, so really grateful to all of our staff at El Diamante, as well as the students who took the leadership and the initiative to organize this event. And to also personally invite our board members. Um, it was a student who reached out to us to ask if we could attend, so uh, really exciting stuff. And then finally, uh, last week I had the chance to volunteer and serve as a judge uh, for the Shannon Ranch Elementary Spelling Bee. Which was a lot of fun. I would have been knocked out in the first round. Um, and you know, major um, congratulations to uh, all of our spelling bee participants. Who really, you know, put on their spurs, really uh, were cheering each other on. It was so great to see the, the sportsmanship. Um, you know, kids high fiving each other between rounds, um, clapping for each other if they missed a word. Um, and just really being a very supportive environment. Um, and for those of you that didn't know, the county. Uh, regional spelling bee was actually going to be held at Rawhide Stadium, I think next month. Um, I'll, I'll look up the exact date, but good luck to all of our participants. Um, really excited to see how our kids will continue to do and thrive. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Otto.
Yeah, since the last board meeting, had the opportunity to engage in a number of things. Took part in the Alice training at the adult school a couple of weeks ago. That was very well done and very well received by staff. It was good to see. I'm sure there's going to be lots of follow on conversation on how to best implement that, but it was a very, very solid. Uh, step forward for the, for the staff there and for the district. Also attended the um, call to action event at Riverway about two weeks ago, I guess it was super turnout for that. Lots of engagement with the community there and I'm looking forward to see how we can build on that. Thanks to Frank Escobar for kind of coordinating the event that evening. It was very well done. Uh, visited uh, Goshen Elementary, um, and got to see that school, very colorful school. Um, that and was pleased to see the combination of strong emerging leadership there. From Principal Gonzalez Thomas and then a staff that has always cared about their kids very personally. Uh, that school has, is the jewel of that particular community. And it's good to see that we're taking care of the kids out there very, very well. Uh, took part in the board study session that was described previously. Uh, that was very useful and time will spend. So thank you much to staff and superintendent for that. And then finally, I got a chance to see the Redwood High School rendition of Bye Bye Birdie. Um, the all school musicals in this district are truly a thing to behold. Great talent in our students, uh, well led by the teachers and staff that come together around those events. And they really do show the concept or display the concept of all school musical. You get kids coming in from all parts and of the school and different programs. To help out and to put it on, whether it's kids in the pit playing music, uh, kids with tools, building sets or kids performing or, or singing. Uh, acting or singing in the events. So they're really, really well done. If you haven't seen one of those before, get out. They are a high quality. Performance and it's great to see what this community can put together. And I'm looking forward to the Matt Whitney Musical this week and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Naylor.
Uh, yes. Kind of duplicate, but um, since the last board meeting, I also attended at Alice, um, emergency preparedness at Green Acres Middle School. Um, and the staff there were, I, I was impressed. They were very involved, participated, asked a lot of good questions. Um, and truly really wanted to know, how do we keep our school safe? So uh, kudos to the staff there. Um, the board planning session, I just want to thank you because that was very good, time very well spent. Very valuable. Um, I love having those. I know it's a full day, but I appreciate it. Um, I visited Creekside, um, along with trustee, uh, Vegas and Belt. It was nice to see. Creekside, the, the teachers, that their, the engagement with the students. It was very obvious that they had a good rapport with the students. Students, when we walked in the classroom, were focused, engaged, um, just what you want at, at, at a school. Um, especially a continuation school, um, such as that. So again. Um, Mr. Perez gave us the tour into the classrooms. He's got it all dialed in from the library down to um, even giving rewards for good behavior. Tickets handed out, um, just, you know, it just all. Um, supports those students there. Um, I also attended the Tulare County School Boards Association meeting along with uh, trustee Gabby. And we kind of talked about just scholarships that, that, that program gives out. Um, designing a webpage and planning a, a spring. Um, program for our school board members and administrators. Um, I also attended the school appreciate, board appreciation dinner, um, where we had a speaker. Uh, Jesse Aguilar, who kind of talked about, you know, things that we're, we're seeing that we have highlights of education and some of the issues that we have going on. But he, he was very positive and I, I just appreciated him giving us the time to talk about. Hey, these are the resources and opportunities that we uh, look forward to putting into our schools to support our students. Um, I also saw Oklahoma on Saturday, the matinee and very impressed. The fact that they had so many students participate and I told Mrs. Link, who was the director, said, I just love it when we have. A lot of students that we can do a musical where we pull in a lot of students from the, from the school. They did an outstanding job. It was very entertaining. Um, shout out to, you know, the principal, Mr. Pasquini and also um, all the staff that were involved. Because I looked down at the pit and I could see some, some retired teachers in there playing. Um, and then you had the students and you had, everything just flowed. They did a great job. So um, thank you. And I want to also welcome our new uh, student rep. Thank you Savannah, you did a great job tonight.
Thank you. Board Member Casebeers Salena.
Uh, so um, I did a lot of things too. So we definitely had the board planning session. Thanks again to um, Superintendent Trum and the. Cabinet, it was very helpful. Um, I went and saw Bye Bye Birdie with my two. My five year old and my three and a half year old. We only made it through the first uh. The first part's a little past bedtime, but they super, super enjoyed it. Um, we followed that up about a week later with Oklahoma. Um, and brought the whole family to that one. We loved it. Um. We have actually been, can't get some of those songs stuck out of our heads, stuck out of our heads. And I can't believe I'm walking around my house singing Oklahoma songs. So um, it was really, really wonderful though. Both presentations, I was just absolutely blown away. Um, just, just wow. I, I am excited to see the rest of them, but not only the talent. But I, I know we've kind of touched on it, just the amount of people, the amount of support it takes. Um, and just, it was really, really good. So if you get the chance, go, go check one out. Um, I also attended the honoring our heroes event that was held by our um, ELOP. Uh, Mount Whitney, uh, this past Saturday, a huge shout out to Jeff Hahn and Michelle Reed. It was super well attended. I couldn't believe um, the amount of families that were there and kiddos. They had um, our local police, the fire department. Our ambulances. Um, I'd actually never been in the back of an ambulance before, so I found that interesting. Um, they had free bounce houses and most importantly, free food. And it was really incredible to see. Um, our community making those connections. I also went to with a couple of other board members, the Seroptimus Ruby Awards Dinner that was held. Where um, two of our. VUSD, I mean, they're not here anymore, but two VUSD former educational, um. Employees were honored, so Carlin Lambert and Nancy Bullin, Bullin? Yeah. And so that was wonderful to see as well. Congratulations to them as again, again, like what an amazing lifetime kind of. Capstone, I, I would think for their careers. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to say that I, I know that mock trial was held these last couple of weeks. I think our students did really well. I unfortunately wasn't able to see any of it this year, but I heard from colleagues and people at the courthouse that. Um, as always, they are always impressed by the kids, um, and, and what they do during those mock trials. So thank you to everyone who volunteered and um, to the kids for doing their best and presenting their cases. And I'll conclude my report.
Thank you. Board Member Belt.
Thank you, President Gamoyen. Well, I, I have a lot of redundancy myself, but the Valley Oak Academic Awards is one of the first things I went to following our last meeting. And was quite amazed. I think Mr. Frank. amazed. I think Mr. Franco said it was upwards of eighty percent of Valley Oak students are 3.0 or higher. That was, I was shocked. They've packed that little gymnasium of theirs twice, seventh grade and then the eighth grade the next hour. Some really good things happening at Valley Oak. The Alice Training, I enjoyed actually a different group. It was the maintenance folks, landscape folks, and and so they had some really unique questions like, well, out in the field, what should we do? And and still run was a good one. It was still serpentine is what they kept saying. And I was impressed with the four professionals that we had, as well as I know that's just a, what they had sixteen altogether or so that was here, helping our district employees all get really good training. These people were not just security guards. These were former DEA and FBI and law enforcement of all kinds who knew what they're talking about. And so I appreciate that we have given all the employees of Isolified some very practical ways of how to deal with active shooter if we ever have to have such a thing. The community call to action was also quite amazing, as several of our board members also were in attendance, because it was so many different aspects of our community. It wasn't just the school and law enforcement. It was District Attorney's Office was there as well as several different faith based organizations and a lot of different counseling folks who say, you know, this is something that we all have to work with in order to see that the what we the term we're using is gang impacting, that that is something that we need to constantly have in front of us. I also appreciated, I didn't know this until sitting in the seat that each one of us, and actually, maybe it didn't happen before. So if it hasn't happened before, I want to say thank you, Superintendent Schrum, for having on your calendar an hour a month with each one of us, because that breaks down barriers. It helps initiate dialogue for us. Now, I also have heard it said from a couple of our board members, well, he is our employee, so he better be available. And I found that true, to give you a call on the weekend and you call, you write me back, oh, text on the weekend, and you text back, and you are engaged nearly 24/7. And I appreciate that, that you we have access. So it's not like, well, the next meeting, maybe we'll get to see the superintendent. That doesn't happen. The Creekside Community School, Mr. Perez was quite impressive to the vision he has for making that not just a, what do you want to call it, in district suspension? No, it's to see these students actually have the opportunity to come back into the regular population and and to learn in the meantime. The LD Campus Community Cultural Fair was an amazing event with all that were involved. Bye Bye Birdie was fun to go and watch because I'm quite the Vapa enthusiast. I actually had a chance to go to Mineral King and see Mrs. DeVal, who is so excited about sharing what's happening at that community school. Something that Mineral King is doing that I'd like to see all of our elementary schools either gain or regain, and that is a community feel, that they have an amazing little library, they have a an involvement of parents at a very high level, as well as I can't remember what the B R U I N S stands for, but it's in every hallway. It's a character count stuff, but it's it's something that students see readily and are engaged with. Going to Golden West finally was a high point for the last couple of weeks for me, because that's where all my sons went to school, to see Mr. Lambert excited about showing us all the different aspects of the modernization that's been completed now, and school is almost back to normal. One of one of those things is rebuilding the metal shop department, and we had a extended time talking with Mark, I forget his first his last name, this teacher there that's brand new, reinitiating how metal shop is something that all students can learn from. And it actually is, again, a career path opportunity for them, as well as connecting them for their academics. And then the I only know one student in Golden West, and we saw him. He was out in the animal pen where Mrs. Gamoyen got to see her goats that they had some brand new ones. And and that young man is well worth seeing because he's a senior, he's a ball player, he's an FFA member, he raises cows and pigs for the fair, and he was welding a bracket to hold, well, what do you call it? It's the pooper scooper, but there was welding the bracket, as well as is an excellent student and a son of one of our teachers at Annie R. Mitchell. Drum line, I went to Saturday night, the winter drum line for Golden West and LD were in Tulare at Mission Oaks School. Oh, my goodness, I'm running out of time. I'm sorry. I'm glad you made me one of the last ones. But more importantly, I had two parents this last few weeks contact me about the issues that they were having with their student at their school. And I've learned how to hear what they're saying, and then direct them to the, not just to Mr. Schrum, not just to an area director, but to their principal, to their assistant principal, to, and they both got very sufficient and satisfied responses and actions for their students to stay active in school. And all minds are clear. So that's, that's the kind of engagement I want to continue to see we have. We, we want to make communication real and honest and active.
Thank you. Board member Gabi.
Well, the benefit to being one of the last is everybody has mentioned everything and and that's, but really, all of the opportunities we've had to be involved in in these last couple of weeks have been fabulous. Two little things, though, I'll add to those events. On the Goshen Visit, one of the things that was striking was, we've all been aware of, you know, the news media of things that have been happening in Goshen, but the principal there said their attendance has not dipped at all. And that really speaks to that safe environment that they're creating there. And so shout out to not only administration, teachers classified everyone there because that is their safe space, and that, you know, makes us feel good that that parents also knew that was a safe space for them. So, you know, just shout out there. And lastly, the Seroptimus Awards, and we did honor Carlin Lambert. She was the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. When I started as a young administrator and was definitely someone that I looked up to, because she never wavered on, we are here for teaching and learning. And that's how we make decisions, putting students first. And she's still, you know, to this day, somebody that will always be there to talk curriculum with you and thinking about it and kind of like that strategizing. And so definitely was honored to be able to honor her. So, and I know she appreciated the amount of Isolio unified people that were there to support. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Just to add on Carlin, she's still involved with our district volunteers and things. I want to start by thanking this board that the dedication that I see to the 30,000 children in our district is amazing. All of you going to all these events, I will not bore you, I will not sing any songs from Oklahoma. We've all been going to schools and visiting. And a couple of things I do want to highlight is when we were at the the El Diamante Civic Cultural Fair, I was talking to Dr. Morris, who's one of our consultants. And last year, I think we had forty kids that were doing the, we'll get that got the seal of civic engagement. This year, if I'm correct, Brandon, over 300 this year. That's amazing to me. And so, you know, Alice Training was good. I got to take down somebody. That was fun. The call to action, the community involvement, and I think what I'm most excited for now is getting out there in the community and listening to all our stakeholders to come up with a strategic plan that services every one of our children and that our children, this board truly believes that every child in our district can learn at high levels. And I'm excited to see, you know, what staff's going to do to bring about this plan and the success of our children. Thank you, Mr. Schrum.
All right. Well, I think we've said everything. I do want to make two announcements. One, first of all, Happy Valentine. So hope everyone has an amazing Valentine's Day. And also want to make an introduction. So we're thrilled to have a new coordinator for Communication Public Information Officer. And so I want to introduce Christina Gutierrez at this time, who is going to be joining our district soon. She is going to be a face, a voice, and and others that you're going to get to know really well. And we're excited about, she has an amazing story of just how important education is to the community that we serve. She's a part of this community, and I look forward to her being part of our growing communications team and look forward to her contribution. So just wanted to introduce her. And I think we're starting next week, hopefully not, I wish it was right now, but soon enough, right? So hopefully everyone will have a chance to say hello. And so I just wanted to make that introduction. And so I'll turn it back over to you, Madam President.
We're moving on to item 10.1, Recommended Expulsions. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, by motion by Board Member Otto, second by K. Spears Saleno, on favor. Student Board Member abstains and motion passes seven zero. Item 11.1, Approval of Art Music Instructional Materials Block Grant, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gamoyen, members of the board and Superintendent Schrum. We're going to get us back on track here. A couple of, at our last board meeting, we talked about Proposition 28 and some of the planning that's been been done around the ongoing arts and music funds, and and we'll come back to the board to report further on that. Tonight, we're going to talk about the one time funds, the Arts and Music Instructional Block Grant. And so I will just share, this is about providing high quality learning experiences as well as as equipment, students and staff with the tools that they need to be successful. So the Arts and Music Instructional Materials Block Grant, purpose of funds to obtain standards aligned professional development and instructional materials. So it does say Arts and Music in the in the headline there, but it really is about these other things, instructional materials, equipment, and and things are in there, but it's about providing instructional materials. And these are one time funds that were allocated in the current budget year, so by the governor and the 2223 state budget. Then it requires approval of a of a plan, and that's what's in your board packet this evening. And we'll talk about some major areas of allowable expenditures. And so lots of curriculum and instruction or instructional materials around some of our core curriculum there. We'll read all of those, but you can see Vapa is included in that. Obtaining instructional materials and PD aligned for improving school climate, support for site based school, classroom libraries and book collections, operational costs, and that's where we'll get some of that equipment kind of things and facilities, and then pandemic related costs, which we're not planning to use any of these funds towards towards that area. I'll also share, when I talked about the governor's budget, that there's a proposal to reduce this pot of funding. So about a 34% reduction is proposed, and so our a lot our allocations about 17 million, so that would reduce us down to about 11 million. There was an allocation or a distribution that was scheduled for May of 2023. We just learned today that that allocation, that distribution is not going to happen. And so they are preparing for some potential cuts to the to these funds. And so just as we are are planning and talking with groups, you know, we're making sure that we are not going to over promise on things that maybe we are not able to do, but still still planning to to assume that there is some going to be some of this funding available. But but again, just being cautious in how we move forward. And so as I share the breakdown, these are really the kind of big buckets that these funds will be allocated to, a lot of that funding to those instructional materials, almost half a million there for library collections, support independent reading, those are mostly in classrooms, and then four and a half million are those operational cost instruments, facilities, library improvements, and replacement equipment. And so again, this is what we're proposing with these funds. Again, we'll have to see how the state budget shakes out on on how much funding we are actually able to spend towards this, towards these resources. So without entertaining any questions.
Questions, comments?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Vegas, second by K. Spears Saleno. Student Board Representative voting yes and motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We will now, 11.2 will now move, we will now open the public hearing, and we're going to hear from Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Kerr.
Good evening again, Board President Gamoyen. So in 2016, the board made the decision and we're very happy about that, to remove all the boilers and chillers from our school sites, and we are well into that process. One of our final sites, and in fact, it's the most extensive project is El Diamante, that entire site. And so what we're bringing to you is a proposal to 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 do the first phase of this project, which is the 300 building, the two story building at El Diamante, to replace that central plant with with package units. And it's a project that's going to be delivered under Energy Government Code 4217, which is energy conservation, and it requires a resolution by the board. And so that's why we're having the public here. The project will be paid for by SR3 funds. This this phase is about $3.8 million all in with the contingencies.
And then also, it has been posted publicly?
Yeah, we we've adhered to all the requirements for for this delivery method 4217. It's been posted. We haven't received any public comment either way, either in favor or against. And so we're now bringing it to you for the public hearing and for approval.
Is there anyone that would like to provide public comment on this item?
Board questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Okay, wait. I'm going to close. I will now close the public hearing.
And now I can motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, on a motion from Board Member Naylor, second by K. Spears Saleno, all in favor.
Okay.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
11.2, 2023 CSB, CSBA Delegate Assembly Member Election.
Yes, so we are pleased to have, well, one delegate already, and of course, that's Jackie Gabi sitting on the board as well. We have the opportunity, there are two open seats. And so within this area, there are two representatives that have to be approved by the local boards of education. And so very pleased, of course, one of those is our own Dr. Randy Vegas buying to, I have one of those seats, along with Kathy Maderos, Tulare Joint Union High School District, and then Felipe Martinez, Porterville USD. So, Madam President, I turn it over you to for our board to select two delegates that we will send in for our vote.
Do I have a motion?
I would motion that we would vote for nominate Dr. Randy Vegas and Kathy Maderos. I do know that Porterville already has representatives on the the Delegate Assembly, so and Tulare, she would be the only one, and she's serving right now. So that's kind of, and of course, well, Dr. Vegas is fabulous.
Second that motion.
Okay, on a motion by Board Member Gabi, second by Dr. Otto, all in favor.
And thank you all for your support. I truly appreciate it. And I also was looking through the CSP website. And one of the things, if I am allowed to become a delegate, is just, there's that second subregion of B that has like three or four vacant seats. And so I'm like, why don't we look at a more equitable distribution of representation between Northern and Southern Central Valley? But thank you all for your vote of confidence.
And vote, the Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
And I'd like to say at 7:48, we will close the meeting. Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day.